Good evening. Being 7:00 PM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Regular Meeting of January 16th, 2024. And Ms. Wegner will lead us in the pledge today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our invocation this evening, we have Reverend Mary Patrice Wendt of Unity Spiritual Center of Woodstock.
Good evening. Let's take a deep breath and go into prayer. Divine Spirit, the guidance and the inspiration of all that we do, all that we are, and all that we are becoming. May the breath that you create move in through our lungs, into our hearts and minds, and in through our words. May we move into this meeting this evening with the guidance and understanding of the Higher Source that knows the best for all, that is the best for all, that is here and now, operating through each and every person in attendance. Thank you for the moments that we are here together to partner, to connect, to collaborate, and to create a plan that works for all, that holds each and every person in its arms and knows its needs. We are here to show up for all. We open our minds to the totality of that responsibility. We open our hearts and ideas to the ways that will make that happen. Let each and every person speak the words from a spirit of truth, of love, and of peace in being a part of the solution that makes this the best place to live. We are so grateful for the gift of each and every person that is here to make that happen. We say thank you, God, and so it is. Amen.
Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Althoff. Campbell. Gattamaller. Greeno. Hendricks.
Here.
Kaminski. Kearns. Kunkel. Meshes. Ness. Reinert. Sager. Shorten. Scala. Smith.
Here.
Van Hoff. Von Bergen. Wegner. Am I mistaken, or did I see Ms. Meshes just a moment ago? I see, okay.
Okay, we have a quorum. I will entertain a motion to allow Mr. Hendricks and Smith to attend remotely. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Gattamaller seconds. All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. We'll move on to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Scala motions, Ms. Campbell seconds. All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Sager, seconded by Ms. Greeno. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Move on to my remarks. Good evening. I hope everyone is staying warm in this frigid weather. I'll keep my report brief. I'd like to start this evening by wishing McHenry County Judge James Cowan a long and happy retirement after 16 years with the 22nd Judicial Circuit. Judge Cowan was appointed to the bench in December 2007 and became a circuit judge in 2015. He quickly earned a reputation as an honorable, just, and thorough judge, and his peers elected him chief judge in 2018. Judge Cowan turned out to be the right man at the right time. During his four years as chief judge, he rose to meet the unprecedented challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, and he shepherded the 22nd Circuit through a time of tremendous change to the criminal and civil justice system in Illinois. When former Chief Judge Michael Sullivan retired, it was said that he would be a tough act to follow. After all, they named the courthouse after him. But let me say that times make the man. And Chief Judge James Cowan filled those shoes and then some. The county board has been invited to a retirement celebration this Friday, and I hope that you can all make it and wish him well. I want to thank Treasurer Donna Kurtz for her ongoing efforts to educate McHenry County seniors about the Senior Real Estate Tax Deferral Program. The program offers tax relief to qualified seniors by providing a loan from the state of Illinois to cover up to $7,500 of their property tax bill. Deferred amounts are repaid upon sale or transfer of the property or within one year of the property owner's death. Besides news releases and social media, Donna is hosting several presentations to explain the program to seniors and offer filing assistance. The first will be held from 2:00 to 3:00 PM Wednesday, January 24th, at the Woodstock Public Library. People who want to learn more about the program and apply before the March 1st deadline can do so by visiting treasurer.mchenrycountyil.gov. And finally, this evening, I will be delivering the annual State of the County address at the February 15th Committee of the Hall. And this concludes my report, which brings us to members' comments, and after that, a proclamation honoring our state champion Cary Grove Trojans football team. Members' comments. Ms. Wegner?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the sheriff's office. There was an issue with somebody I know today, and they took fast and expedient care of them. So if you ever need your sheriff's office, you know, you can call them and they'll get the job done. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel?
The oldest ski jump in the nation is right here in McHenry County, Fox River Grove. They're holding their 119th Annual Tournament, January 27th and 28th. If you haven't been out to see it, it's really something to see. Kids from no taller than your knees to guys almost my age or older than I. And it's a spectacular little event. You should really come out and see it. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we'll move on to special recognition. I will entertain a motion to approve the proclamation honoring the Cary Grove High School Trojans Football Team for winning the 2023 Class 6A State Championship. Ms. Greeno makes the motion, Ms. Meshes seconds, and Ms. Meshes will read the proclamation.
Thank you. It's my honor. Honoring the Cary Grove High School Trojans Football Team for winning the 2023 Class 6A State Championship. Whereas the Cary Grove High School Trojans Football Team won the Class 6A title at the Illinois High School Association State Championship on Saturday, November 25th. And whereas the Trojans came back from behind with a 71-yard fourth-quarter drive to defeat the defending 6A champion East St. Louis Flyers, 23 to 20. And whereas Saturday's victory was the third state championship win in five years for the Trojans, who defeated the Flyers to win the 2021 championship. And whereas head coach Brad Seberg has a record of 125 wins and 28 losses in his 13 seasons leading the Trojans. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the County Board of McHenry County, Illinois, that the members of the board congratulate the Cary Grove High School Trojans Football Team and Coach Brad Seberg for their victory. And be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread upon the records of the McHenry County Board, and that the county clerk is authorized to distribute certified copies to the county administrator in Cary Grove High School as a sign of our respect and esteem. Dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this 16th day of January AD 2024.
All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Come on up, boys. Let's grab a picture. Coach, come on up. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing January 15th, 2024, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. Ms. Althoff makes the motion, Mr. Scala seconds, and Ms. Van Hoff will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman. And those of you who were at the COW last week heard me read this at that time because we realized that the holiday would be yesterday, and we're officially voting on it tonight. So if you heard it once before, bear with me. I'm going to read it again. Whereas on November 2nd, 1983, President Ronald Reagan signed Martin Luther King Jr. Day into law, designating the third Monday in January as a federal holiday to commemorate the civil rights leader Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas the MLK holiday bill went into effect on January 1st, 1986, and has been recognized in all 50 states since the year 2000, given Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. the distinction of being the only American other than a U.S. president to have a holiday named after him. And whereas Dr. King left a lasting legacy as a nonviolent leader, changing our nation's perspective on civil rights, labor, and the value that every person can bring to our nation when provided opportunity. And whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. dedicated his life to championing the rights of Black Americans, always reminding those who thirst for freedom that in the process of gaining our rightful place, we must not be guilty of wrongful deeds. Let us not seek to satisfy our thirst for freedom by drinking from the cup of bitterness and hatred. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the McHenry County Board, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim to all residents of McHenry County that January 15th, 2024, is duly recognized as the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of observance. And all citizens are encouraged to work towards promoting equality and justice for all Americans. And be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the county administrator, the county board chairman, and the director of human resources. Dated at Woodstock, Illinois, the 16th day of January AD 2024. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Proceed to zoning positions. Do any members have items they'd like removed from the zoning consent agenda? Mr. Kearns?
10A2.
Seeing no others, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda. Mr. Gattamaller makes the motion, Ms. Wegner seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Hendricks, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 10A2. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Sager seconds. Discussion, Mr. Kearns?
I pulled this because I just don't agree with the amendments. And therefore, I just wanted to pull it off so I could vote no.
Okay, seeing no further comment. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Hendricks, how would you like to be shown?
Epstein.
Okay. Mr. Smith, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
And Mr. Kunkel? Okay.
Motion carries. Move on to public comment. Just a reminder, those who wish to comment publicly and address the board have three minutes to speak, at which time the red light will come on in front of me. And I would ask you to summarize your comments at that point if you hadn't completed your comments. First up, we have Judge Michael Camille.
I didn't realize that was first. You know, I was working, believe it or not, since 8:00 this morning, and I saw a light, so I thought I'd come by for no other purpose than to say thanks, believe it or not. And I mean that. Thank you. I often see my dear friend Pam Althoff and assorted others, Mayor Sager, and oh, a few of you, at the Law and Government Meetings when we're trying to figure out how to support our court system. Normally, we stay on the other side of where, but no, it's a great working relationship. And as the current chief judge, and I really appreciate the chairman's comments about Jim. Jim's working up until the very end, and we count on him. But when he steps down, we're actually going to be two judges down. So we're doing what we can. We're filling some vacancies. But really, nothing more than to say thank you. Thank you for, to the extent we can, because sometimes the county is in our courtrooms. Thank you for the partnership. That's the way the statutes set us up, for you to provide us with the infrastructure. The Law and Government Committee, it's an outstanding... We enjoy coming there to hear questions and comments. And I did offer to, you know, host your next meeting, Pam. It's totally up to you. I didn't see that. But no, it's just, seriously, thanks. I think things are going good. We've had all of these challenges with the Pretrial Fairness Act, which I get to do these days because we're short. And I'll take over another call come February 1, but we're blessed to have the opportunity. And I'll end on this, and I think Chairman Bueller and Peter and Scott have heard some of this. When I get to go to meetings with other chief judges, there are 25 of us from throughout the state. This morning, by the way, I'm working on AI for the state judiciary. And Tim Evans, he shows up in our meeting, and you know, we show up, right? That's what you all want us to do. But it's amazing, and I'm not going to critique other operations. But when there are questions about the relationship, I say, well, why would I want to interfere with that? You know, for example, if you have a check that we went and tried to get to recoup some costs, like with public defender fees, just send it to Joe or whoever gets the check. I guess Donna, right? She's a treasurer. But it's great. So nothing more than to say thank you, and I appreciate it. If you all ever want to come across where, you're invited for a tour or whatever. If you have business, we appreciate that. We'll stay in our lane, and that's all I have to say. So thanks very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next will be Deborah Nieto.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Nieto. I'm the chief deputy county clerk. I'm here tonight to say a few words regarding the Election Center Building to be voted on this evening. I'd like to start by sharing with you some of the responsibilities that our office has specific to elections and the current space and conditions. Our office is constitutionally required to administer all elections held in McHenry County. It takes us, a staff of 20, somewhere between four to six months to prepare equipment, ballots, supplies, judges, polling places, and voters for every election. The equipment and supplies used in every election are prepared for by us alone. We have 640 poll pads with 640 printers and 300 express vote ballot marking devices to program and test. We have 166 in precinct tabulators and two high-speed tabulators to program and test with anywhere from 300 to 1,700 different ballot styles to ensure that they are tabulating correctly. We have 100 polling places to secure and staff, and 11 early voting sites to schedule and prepare. Our staff personally trains between 700 and 1,200 election judges every single election. All of the equipment and supplies, about $5 million worth, are currently stored in about 8,000 square feet on multiple floors in multiple buildings. Every election, we are expected to play Jenga with equipment and space in this building in the hopes that one wrong move of a 75-pound piece of equipment doesn't cause the tower of preparation to fall. Staff moves every piece of equipment multiple times throughout an election cycle, each weighing between 20 and 75 pounds. Our shelves are nine feet high, our ladders are 25 years old. The carts that we use to move thousands of pounds of equipment and supplies between floors of this building have wobbly wheels, are 10 years old, and the elevators in this building routinely break. The building that stores some of our equipment has heating and cooling problems on top of bugs and mice that creep through gaps in the walls. Staff spends days in that building packing and coming back to the office with cobwebs, bugs, and dirt all over them. I tell you all of these things because while a new elections facility may seem like an unnecessary expense or something that can be put off until the perfect location can be purchased, the staff in our office should not be expected to continue to run elections in these conditions. The space provided to us is not adequate. It is not safe for staff, and it should not be acceptable. You as elected officials understand how important elections are in this county and in this country. I am here tonight not because elections preparation is an imposition to other offices in this building, but because elections are essential to every single office in this building. Everyone needs to understand the volume and quantity of work that is required for a successful election and the conditions that could be improved simply by having one single safe, secure, and modern facility to do them all. Thank you.
Kristen Smith?
Hello. My name is Kristen Smith, and I'm one of the supervisors in the county clerk's office. I'm here to speak to you regarding the resolution that would allow us to consolidate county clerk election operations. We need space. Each election, we take over multiple rooms in the administration building, including the cafeteria, attached conference rooms for training, signature verification, and processing vote by mail. We reserve multiple conference rooms upstairs for larger training classes and early voting. All of these tasks overlap, making it extremely difficult to find space to coordinate. Because we share the conference rooms with colleagues and committees, we are forced to set up and take down equipment eight to 10 times a week. Training in this building consists of gathering the required number of items for training from nine-foot shelves in the basement, putting set equipment on three rolling racks, and bringing them up to the conference room where we take all the equipment off and set up. We need to tape down all power strips and extension cords, which requires us to crawl on the floor to tape everything down for safety purposes. Each time we do this, it takes at least five people out of the office. That's eight to 10 hours per week, times five people who are spending time on this when we could be contributing time to other required election tasks. For the March 2024 election, due to lack of space in this building, we are using the Shaw Center in McHenry to hold some of our training classes. This requires, again, five people to pack up two vans of equipment. Once at the Shaw Center, we take at least six trips from the vans into the building where we set up the equipment and, again, tape down all the power strips and extension cords, requiring us to crawl again on the floor to make everything safe. We have eight classes at Shaw Center, making it 16 times we set up and take down. That's eight different times we send five people out for three hours with travel, making 15 hours in one day that we could be contributing time to other election tasks. And this is just one small piece of the puzzle. We test 300 express vote machines, 642 polling pads. This means taking them off the nine-foot rolling shelves in the basement, moving them upstairs, test, and take them back down to put on those nine-foot rolling racks. This step is repeated 942 times and generally have to set up in the cafeteria due to limited space. We are a team of 20. The new space would satisfy all of our election needs. It is very difficult to find office workers that will do the required tasks for an election. Not only do we have an election in November 2024, but there are elections in February and March of 2025. I'm sorry, February and April of 2025, where we have state statute-required tasks overlapping elections. In order us to continue to be successful and to serve the people of McHenry County at the highest level, we need more space. Please vote yes for the referendum. Thank you.
Lindsey Nevett?
Hello, I'm Lindsey Nevett, and I'm one of the supervisors in the county clerk's office. I've worked in the office for almost eight years, and my main responsibilities have been working in elections. In the time that I have been here, there hasn't been one election where we have had adequate space to perform all the tasks to prepare for an election, even when we got the new equipment in 2018, which involved bigger equipment to store but no more space to store it in. We make it work because we have to. We have no choice. Between election judge training, vote by mail, and getting equipment and supplies ready, our office takes over most of this building for months on end. Each day, we have to figure out what tasks can be completed with the space or work areas that are available, if the task needs to be done immediately, or if it can wait until a bigger area is available. Needing bigger work areas is not something new. When this building was built, elections were mainly still on paper. There was no big equipment to store, and everything usually fit on the shelves. Over the years, technology has been introduced to the elections, which means bigger equipment to store. The working areas we once had are now taken up by the equipment. The working areas we once had are now taken up by the equipment. A regular day of getting ready for an election is setting up to 20 to 30 pieces of equipment in an area, barely having enough room for us to walk around, finishing that group, moving those 20 to 30 pieces out of the way, trying to get the next group out and set up. We play Tetris with over 1,000 pieces of equipment, plus thousands of other supplies for every election. We do this for 100 polling places, plus the 11 early voting sites. When everything is ready to go out to our polling places, we have to pack everything into giant moving boxes for trucks to come and pick it up. We don't have enough space to get all those set up at once, so we have to load a few trucks for the trucks to come pick up, and then by the time they leave, we have about an hour to get the next group ready to go. Having to move and regroup everything, and just to move them some more, takes three times longer than needed to complete any one of the tasks that need to be done for an election, not to mention everything we do must be touched several times before it is ready to go out. Asking for this building is not a want, it is a need. It is an immediate need. This building will give us the relief our office desperately needs with the sub, with the space to complete all tasks, storage for equipment and voting materials. It also provides a space for vote-by-mail to be processed, election judge training, an early voting site, and all other tasks associated with the election process. Please support our office and vote yes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jody Zitko, and I have been a resident of Illinois for 57 years. I'm also a volunteer and a director for the United Sovereign Americans Illinois Chapter, a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen, sharing alarming information about the Illinois voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by our highly-qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear: they don't add up. Just like your checkbook has to balance, so do our votes. If you had $10,000 more in your bank account than you had deposited, you would certainly want to know where it came from. And if a company had a significant discrepancy in their books, they would most certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all public companies. And that is simply all we are asking, is for an end-to-end audit of the 2022 election from registration through certification. We are not saying one candidate surely won over another, and we are not asking for an election to be overturned. We just want to ensure that the votes, as counted, are valid and accurate under the law. Issues have been found in the state voter roll database indicating that may not be what happened. Today, we will present to you a resolution for an audit with a summary of those findings and the law. We're happy to meet with you, if to have, if we want to have time to go over this information, including more detail about the specific findings. If you have questions that I cannot answer now, I'm committed to getting the answer in writing from United Sovereign Americans executive team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation has been shared with the state officials, and will be shared with law enforcement, the attorney general, and election certifiers, and they have largely ignored our request. Tonight, we come to you, your, our closest elected representatives for support and action. We're asking that you listen to our resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on the resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to our concerns and the concerns of your constituents. Thank you for listening to and considering our resolution. The next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and thank you.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Michelle Peterson. I've been a resident of Illinois for 29 years. I am a volunteer and not an official spokesperson for United Sovereign Americans. Our resolution con, our resolution continued. I will be reading Part 1 of our three-part resolution. Resolution for an audit of the Illinois 2022 general election. Whereas it is recognized civil rights in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, quote, "and the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of a franchise," Reynolds v. Sims, 377 U.S. 533, 1964. Whereas it is the affirmative duty of our election officials to comply with all federal and state laws governing administration and procedure of our elections, thereby guaranteeing our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law," end quote, in Rekoi, 127 U.S. 731, 1888. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the worth of honest ballots is not diluted by invalid ballots procured by corruption, and assuring accuracy can only be achieved through fealty of those laws governing the following four tenets of election. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate. This is according to the National Voter Registration Act of 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. This is per the U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. This is just common sense. Number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. This is according to the Help America Vote Act of 2002. This concludes Part 1. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tristi Metzouka, and I've been a resident of Illinois for 45 years. I'm a volunteer and not an official spokesperson for United Sovereign Americans. Our resolution continued. I will be reading Part 2 of our three-part resolution. Whereas, an open-source audit of the Illinois 2022 general election conducted by the Illinois State citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies and the violation of both federal and state laws, including 4,032,801 ineligible and uncertain registration violations founded within the state, Illinois State voter roll database. 589,985 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. 27,491 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election. No one knows who cast them. 589,952 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of the system accuracy for a valid federal election. For the 2022 election in Illinois, this number was 33. Certification as defined by law and as testation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas, these findings trample accuracy requirements of voting systems for a federal election, wherein the system shall achieve a target error rate of no more than one in 10 million ballot positions, or one in 125,000 ballots. For a voting system, accuracy is defined as the ability of a system to capture, record, store, consolidate, and report the specifics on selections and absence of selections made by the voter for each ballot position without error. Whereas, it is, must be known factually and provably that the intent of the voters is accurately represented by election results before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud ab initio, United States versus Throckmorton, 98 U.S. 61, 1878. Whereas, state officials have met the efforts of these, of Illinois state citizens to seek redress for these egregious, egregious violations within indifference and inaction, including the governor, attorney general, secretary of state, state board of elections, county election officials, county clerks, sheriffs, state attorneys, and others. This concludes Part 2. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Burkett. Ken's going to speak at the end. I'm a volunteer and not a official spokesperson of the United Sovereign Americans. I've been a resident of Illinois for 40 years. I will be reading Part 3 of our three-part resolution. None of the reported 2020 violations were addressed prior to the administration and certification of the 2022 general election, and there prevails a spirit of extreme contention and zero trust between people of different political ideologies across Illinois, which is destructive to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives, including town board members, county legislators, state legislators, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, and judges, to provide relief to the people and the insurance, I'm sorry, and the assurance of domestic tranquility through the fulfillment of each of the following firm requests. A complete end-to-end audit from registration through certification of the Illinois 2022 general election for both paper and electronic records, including ballots by a mutually agreed-upon external third-party bonded audited firm, possessed of adequate insurance and indemnification for the handling and protection of the personal identifying information of millions of Illinois citizens in order to determine the true error rate. This audit will provide a comprehensive report and analysis of all lapses and errors with explanation of cause where it can be determined. Number 2, the enactment of legislation defining a mutually agreed-upon process by which an end-to-end audit would be triggered in any future elections. 3, the enactment of legislation defining a mutually agreed-upon accuracy rate for the voter roll databases. 4, the enactment of legislation allowing for anonymous vote verification and tracking by the voter. It would be open source, royalty-free, patent pending, including automated, automatic mechanisms to report and remedy errors during the canvas period following an election, regardless of ballot entry source. 5, criminalize election misconduct explicitly with regard to state election law, and increase penalties to reflect the societal and generational harms inflicted by these crimes. Be it resolved that the Board of McHenry County stands in support with the concerns and remedies presented here, we implore the Illinois legislator, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both state and county board of elections to cooperate and ful, fulfill these firm requests of the people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ken Zitko, and I've lived in Illinois for 51 years, and I'm a volunteer and a state director for the Illinois Chapter of United Sovereign Americans. You just heard a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our elections from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for five, five firm requests, including an end-to-end audit of the 2022 general election from registration through certification. In it, you, in fact, you also heard, sorry, in it, you heard us ask for five firm requests, including an end-to-end audit of the 2022 general election. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such an action. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need to understand why. Audits occur daily in all types of businesses across the country and the world. Audits are so common that in 2021, it was a $200 billion worldwide industry. Yet, the voter system, which controls our most vitally important right, the right of suffrage, escapes this common everyday practice. If the gas receipts of the maintenance department in our town needed to be audited, it would be done. Isn't the voting system, at least, if not more, important? Do you think that these anomalies within our election system, which is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? If not, you can show your agreement by passing the resolution, showing your support for our demand that the state of Illinois hold valid and legal elections going forward. If you're not in a position at this time to vote on a resolution, we ask that you invite us back and place it on the agenda, where we can provide a more detailed presentation, answer questions, and facilitate passing of the resolution. We have a website showcasing our initiatives nationwide. It has some great videos that explain these anomalies and apparent violations of law, which have been found in this state as well as in others. The website is uniteforfreedom.com, so that's unite, the number 4, freedom.com. I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our efforts. Thank you for your time, and...
Ma'am, maybe you could just leave them on the table over there?
Thank you.
Tanya Joy Gibson?
Good evening. My name is Tanya Joy Gibson. I've been a resident of Illinois for over 40 years, and a resident of McHenry County for over 10 years. I am a volunteer and not an official spokesperson for United Sovereign Americans. What you heard today is the accumulation of thousands of hours of work by our highly-qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams from this state and across this country. Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. High numbers of Americans, including many right here at home in our county, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish that was not the case, but official data shows that these concerns are valid, and the law says they are important in securing our liberty. At the same time, government representatives at all levels are not being transparent and responsive to what our citizen audits have found. Our right to vote for our elected representatives in legally valid and transparent elections is the foundation on which our democratic republic was established, and that right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half centuries by the sacrifices of our brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters. You, on this board tonight, have a chance to show everyone who defended that right, and the citizens you represent, that you value it by also passing this resolution for an audit. It is time to open the books on our elections. Hopefully, we discover everything is right and good, but it is time to make sure. I have now concluded my speaking as a volunteer with USA, and would like to just share my own personal comments. I've been working with leaders throughout this country and fighting to expose the political climate for over two years through my web show, The Tanya Joy Show. I have viewership across the country and overseas through many outlets, including many new conservative networks. It has been my honor to have interviewed many of our current McHenry County government officials as they ran for office or reelection. I was approached by the McHenry County GOP back in 2021 to run for the county treasurer position, as my background is in finance. I was told I would have the full backing of the GOP and potentially win the position, even though I had really never held public office. It allowed for me to begin to ask the tough questions. I was personally sent five ballot applications for the 2020 elections, including people that did not live at my address. I have been told that there is absolutely nothing wrong with our election process in McHenry County or the legality of it. We are the last conservative collared county outside of Chicago, and we are barely that at this point. We are at a precarious point in history. Thousands of private citizens like myself have lost our jobs, our friends, our family members, because we believe so deeply in the foundation of this great nation and what our forefathers did when they wrote the Constitution. I urge you, take this moment in history and become someone who makes history. Stand for truth. Stand for freedom. Stand for America and the reason why we are America, which is we have the right to choose our government. We, the people, are the voice. Thank you.
That concludes public comments. We'll proceed to new and unfinished business. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 13A, a resolution authorizing a title change for job code 18001008 from Communications and Project Manager to Director of Public Affairs. Mr. Scola makes the motion. Mr. Shorten seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries. Proceed to appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments to the Community Development Housing Grant Commission and Ethics Commission. Ms. Althoff makes the motion. Ms. Ness seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Hendricks, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Mr. Kunkel, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith, how would you like to be shown?
Motion carries. Next to any standing committee chairs, have... Next to any standing committee chairs, have updates or liaison updates for us tonight? Mr. Reiner?
Yes, for the McHenry County Conservation District. This month, the typical meeting in general business, however, they also swore in the chief of place for the McHenry County Conservation District Police Department, Chief Ryan Stewart. He was sworn in, and it was attended by a lot of his colleagues and also our Sheriff Rob Tattlemann. So that's report for the McHenry County liaison.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner?
Thank you. For the McHenry County Workforce Network, so you probably have heard me talk about the Step Forward Program. So they recently received a grant, another grant, last month, and they started a new cohort of 14-plus applicants in the Step Forward Program. Normally, they have about six to eight participants, so 14, they're expanding. The participants are workforce talent that has a, that they have a conviction in their background as an obstacle. Some may be in recovery and have additional obstacles, and the focus of the program is to help guide these individuals to be job-ready. With the grant they received, it will help support the individuals in gaining paid internships and build valuable job skills. So if anybody's ever interested in checking out the Step Forward Program, contact Workforce Network. It's really an inspirational group to go view. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Ness?
There was no meeting Monday of the housing authority because of the holiday.
Thank you. Proceed to the routine consent agenda. Do any members have items they'd like removed from the routine consent agenda for discussion? Mr. Kearns?
16B25, 16B43.
Okay, seeing no others, I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda, less item 16B25 and 16B...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to show that I'm abstaining from 16B218, but otherwise have no objection to it being on the consent agenda.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda, less item 16B25 and 16B43. Mr. Gotamaller makes the motion. Ms. Althoff seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Hendricks, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve item 16B25. Mr. Kearns makes the motion. Mr. Sager seconds. Discussion? Mr. Kearns.
You know, there's been a lot of discussion on this at the Committee of the Whole, and I feel this is something that we should do, and we should look at the handout tonight with the difference, the savings, now that it's just seven years, and then also the net cost, less the estimated savings of the $200,000 per year. I'd like to ask if someone could explain those savings, if they are, could, we could tie those that they are hard savings, or are they just estimated?
So the savings are outlined in the document that looks much like this? And so some of them are a little harder to call hard, you know, it's, we're not going to eat five fewer apples, if you will, but we will be able to use, in many cases, our talent for their proper use rather than, excuse me, as day labor. Some of the, some of the savings are a little, how shall I say, firm, in that we have injuries and that we can count on. We have losses of people, and that we can certainly count on. The exact cost of a loss of a person depends on the person, depends on the cost, the cost involved in replacing that person, so that varies, but those are real, real costs. The longer somebody's here, and then they leave, the more we lose when they go, and in these times, it's remarkably hard to find somebody that will pass muster and take this job. So those are some, I don't know, does that help answer your question, or did I just muddy it for you?
I think you muddied it a little bit there.
Okay.
So I just want to know, I want to say, I actually do support this. I like the building. I like the location. Real estate, location, location, location. My feeling it being next to the Drivers' Bureau, I think it will add a lot of potential people who would stop into that location to early vote because of that location being right there.
Right.
I think it's closer to town. I, as for the injuries and different things, I don't know if that changes, whether you're there or here. I don't know if that changes.
It does dramatically. We, the number of times that we have to pick up and move this equipment, and it's not light, and bring it from here to there, to the degree that we can reduce that, which will be dramatic. You heard some of my employees talk about the numerous times that we have to go set up and take down and crawl around on the floor and pick it up and put it down. If we can set up training one time in a situation where we can train 60 to 75 people at once, train all day long, never touch that equipment until we're done with it in training, that's a huge benefit.
Okay, there's the answer I was looking for.
Yeah.
Is, is how are you going to do that in that location grants that?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So again, I support this. I don't think putting this off down the road, kicking the can down the road, I don't think we have time, and this isn't urgent, let's not get this wrong. It's not urgent, because we could survive doing it here again.
Maybe.
And...
But maybe not.
And, but we could if we had to, we could make do with it. If we wanted to choose to build a building rather than lease, I've heard people say that it, you know, vote this down, and it would be a negotiation for, against the, against the person who owns the building possibly for a shorter. I think they've done the work a little bit to get it to the seven years. So I'm just saying, I would support this. I don't think we should kick the can down the road. I had thought about that, maybe bring it back next month or down the road and do some more research. I just, I just think it's, we, we're at the point that, yes, I do agree with you that it is something we need to do, so.
And if I could add, I mean, there is clearly a need. I mean, it's hard to, if you're around this building as we get closer and closer to Election Day, it's hard to miss that. And the, in terms of getting better terms, I think if we do what we have in front of us today, that buys us some time to not only look at what the long-term vision is potentially for the clerk's office, but perhaps to ask the question, what is it for the entire suite of county offices? Is there, is there a plan 10, 15 years out about how to not only address the needs of the clerk, but the treasurer and the assessor and everybody else that's in here? And I think that's a good point to start looking at it, honestly. So thank you.
Mr. Scala.
Do you, do you want a motion to adopt the new resolution, or do you want to hear comments first?
Oh, the amended?
The amended resolution with the seven years. Do you want that first, or do you want comments?
Yeah, let's have that. A motion to amend.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the resolution to the new outline resolution at our spaces, which take the lease from a 10-year to a seven-year.
Okay. Ms. Van Hoff seconds that. Any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Scala.
Okay. I'm not going to repeat all the comments I had made before at the Committee of the Whole meeting. I just wanted to, I'm still against the resolution. I do feel for the staff that came and spoke at public comment, and I agree with Joe. And so I had contacted Pete earlier regarding, I feel, the space needs of our county. And I would ask that, I asked Pete to try and work with staff and our, I don't know what committee that would go through, but to try and look at our space needs. I mean, this is obviously what you're and your staff are experiencing is not something that just came up yesterday, or two days ago, or a month ago, or two months ago. I mean, this is a problem that we've been having for a long time. And so to me, I don't know, I've been here for over 10 years. I've never seen a space study done by, that was presented to the board. Now, maybe you do it internally, but I've asked staff to work on that, because our staff shouldn't be crawling on the floor doing this and picking up heavy stuff and trying to do Jenga, and that's not how a professional organization operates. And so whether this passes or not, this is something we should be working on. This is something that, as a board, we should be making decisions on the health of our staff and where we should be looking at for the future. And I'm sorry, Joe, but I don't, I disagree. This is not something that gives us time. This is something we should be doing now, because you're not the only department that has space issues. And we have other leases for spaces that, you know, we could probably get rid of if we had a long-term solution to what our space needs are. And I don't have an answer. I don't know what that is, whether we buy a building, we build a building. I mean, I don't really care what that looks like. I'm just asking for that to be studied and then presented to the board so we can make decisions. So that was one of the things that I talked to, you know, Pete about, and it'll probably go through Joe's committee, I'm guessing, but, you know, just something, and again, this isn't something that needs to happen tomorrow, but we have to somehow look at what all of the department's needs are, analyze it, and then come up with a comprehensive solution. I still plan on voting no for this, but regardless of the outcome, that's what I would hope that we could be looking at in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I would be interested in Mr. Terrio's opinion or projection regarding if there'd be any reduction in staff with this move, since we've heard so much about that it's going to save so much staff time and extra work. Mr. Terrio, have any idea on if there was going to be a staff reduction? Thank you.
You know, I don't think that, so I've reduced staff in my departments by about a third since I've been in office. I don't so much see a reduced staff, but I do see a dramatically reduced overtime demand. I mean, you guys likely don't see it, but we're here oftentimes Saturdays, and sometimes we occupy not only the basement, but the first floor and all the hallways in the first floor, because we need that extra space, and we come in a Saturday because that's the option that we have. And that's all overtime. So I think we could see a dramatic reduction in overtime, and I haven't had a chance to put pen to paper to figure out exactly what that would amount to. Some would still be necessary, but far less.
Thank you.
Is that overtime included in your analysis?
It's not yet, no.
Mr. Kunkel?
Why, I appreciate the hard work that the Clerk's whole staff does, and I absolutely appreciate Joe Terrio and his office and what they do. There are so many undotted i's and uncrossed t's in this thing, and I've had more phone calls from constituents on this event than I've had anything since I've been on the board. I think it was the sheer dollars of the original 3.3 million that had taxpayers upset in the beginning. I do like this new resolution. I do like where it's moved to that, but right now, I feel it is irresponsible for us with all these unanswered questions from you and all the unanswered questions from the board. I would like to make a motion to table this for 30 days and bring it back up after we've had all these answers answered. We owe that to our taxpayers. We can't say we guessed on a seven-year, $2 million lease. We can't do that. That's just not right. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Greenow? Discussion on the motion to table? Motion to postpone to date certain? Ms. Beshes?
So I'm wondering what the consequences would be of putting this out 30 days, like what? There's kind of two consequences I could assume, and so correct my assumptions. One is that this somehow puts us back so far that this isn't going to be usable for the November election, which is what the anticipated plan was. Another assumption I might have is that at some point, these terms change, or that the owner of the property backs out. If there's other consequences you see, or other staff, you know, other than, staff also is welcome to answer that question of what consequence could we see to postponing this for a month?
So from, from my perspective, obviously, well, likely it'll push back opportunity to occupy, and that begins to encroach on training opportunities. I'd have to put pencil to paper and look at the calendar, so we might lose some of the benefit, the first, first election benefit of it if we don't get sooner occupancy. And as far as the owner, I could only guess what his feelings might be about it.
Thanks.
For my part on the tabling, I originally had put my light on to talk about how I was going to, I was going to turn and support this motion, and I don't think my mind would change in that month. While I'm on the speaker, I might as well say, the reason why I have reversed my position from Thursday is because I appreciated, I asked for more options. I appreciated that more options were distributed to the, shown to me. I appreciated the analysis of why those options were not suitable, and I do anticipate, I do, I guess vow, that as part of the Administrative Services Committee, I will make this a focus to try to get this space study that other board members have spoken to, because I don't like leases, and I think that there are a lot of needs that departments have wanted and been asking for, but we haven't made any, I haven't seen the board making progress on trying to meet the space needs or anticipate for what we should do. So I will support, I'm not going to support tabling. I will support the motion as it is, with the caveat that I am not going to forget about my desire to fix the space problem we have with our, with more than just the Clerk's Department, but the other departments, too.
Okay, so these comments coming up here are going to be on the motion to postpone, so if your light is on for the overall, I would ask that you turn them off. Ms. Ness?
I don't really see a point in tabling it for 30 days. I don't know what more we would learn in 30 days. It's really kind of like just pushing this down the road. A space study is going to take... A space study is going to take time, and then solutions will take time. And whether we like it or not, allowing our staff in the Clerk's office to continue to function in that environment for the rest of the year is unacceptable to me. And so we don't often get staff come before us and ask us for something, and they did. And it's important to listen to them. So I think if they have better working conditions, they will work better and more efficiently. They'll get other stuff done. They won't have to do these redundancies. I'm not kidding you, I'm a trainer. If I had to set up and tear a room down three times a day, I wouldn't take the job. So I adamantly support this effort. I think it's a good move for the county. I think it's a good move for the clerk. I think it's a good place to put it. It's a good building. I I don't see any reason not to support this effort and help the Clerk's office do the job they want to do around voting.
Thank you. Ms. Greenow?
My day started out at a doctor's appointment where a nurse who does not know that I'm involved on the board, uh, shared with me that she has to move out of McHenry County because her property taxes have gone so high. Uh, my issue with this and my support of postponing it for adequate research is the art of the deal. The costs associated with the current process need to be specifically identified, and those that uniquely are associated that would be dissipated by the proposed change would be shown on a spreadsheet. In any scenario such as this, you would examine all of the options. Number one, being the status quo, which is where those expenses would be shown. Number two would be, uh, a scenario, just just examples, I'm just pulling out examples, uh, smaller square footage with secured storage separately because that could be less expensive. Uh, number three, the current scenario, and number four, what could be a longer-term solution? After having reviewed those different options, then the best one would be chosen, possibly this one, and then negotiations would begin. Uh, what we have before us, uh, on this spreadsheet for this lease liability, um, does not show additional costs for the build-out or furnishings that are going to be involved. When you are going into negotiations, you get comparatives, and I hear, oh, there's nothing available. Well, that's not how you do comparatives for negotiation. You get what would be available in order to negotiate. You look at the, um, the same thing that a professional would do when they don't have apples to apples. They get what, uh, puts them in a best negotiating position. Uh, not only do we want to never split the difference and leave taxpayer dollars on the bottle, uh, on the table, but we have to be aware of the optics of what's going on in this situation. We passed a motor fuel tax increase. We passed new growth of the 2024 budget. We, uh, passed increasing the tax levy. And the cherry on top, we have an administrator who put on public video stating that we can cover the cost of the center, no problem, because there's plenty of money. Well, of course, there's plenty of money. Uh, we've can forecast $12 million in bank account interest alone in 2024. The problem is, it's not our money. It's the hard-earned money of that nurse and the frustration that she shared this morning. It's the money of the seniors on fixed incomes, young families, single mothers, Joe, those watching, um, uh, their properties and sales tax and license and use taxes go up and up and up in this red-collar county. So my issue is with the lack of aggressive negotiation on behalf of the constituents of McHenry County. And for this reason, I support extending this for 30 days so that we can go back and actually do a proper cost analysis, looking at these as any businessperson would. And, um, if this does not get pulled back for us to do our work, then I will vote no in order to still give this board that opportunity. Um, also, we have a lot of intellectual property on this board regarding commercial construction and how this can be done. I personally have done at least two major construction projects nearly in this time in less than a four-month period from the time that I closed the deal until I opened the business doors. So that is where I stand on it, and I hope that everyone will take a moment and think.
Ms. Wagner?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I really appreciate the staff's comments coming out to speak with us. Uh, it shows that you're really dedicated to your job and you're willing to, you know, brave the county board meeting and and come speak with us, so thank you. Um, it's also showing that this is timely. I I have one question. So right now, I'm sure you're preparing for the March, um, primary. Are you going to be able to navigate working on the March primary while you're, um, entering into the contract and then moving into this new building? Or do you plan to do that after the primary?
The move wouldn't happen until June or July. So, but the work prior to that, uh, we've been working, uh, along with Scott and Peter as well. Um, so, yeah, we'll, I'll figure out a way to make that work.
So in order for you to be prepared for the November election, you need to have this signed and and then the build-out starting so you guys can move in in a timely manner?
That would be ideal. As I mentioned, the, uh, as we get farther out in the calendar, it may encroach on our ability to do the training there, which creates more, uh, or less benefit in that first election.
And if we are signing a contract where we're going to spend this much money, we might as we might as well be moved in instead of spending extra money to train somewhere else.
Right.
I, um, will be voting no on the postponement.
Mr. Kunkel?
Well, I do have 40 years in the commercial construction business, so I can speak with authority to tell you the 30-day delay that we take to make a competent decision on this building and this property. And I'm all for it, Joe. I'm all for this. But I want the questions answered. I want to see how far this is really trying to span. No offense to you or anybody, there's a lot of holes here still in the in the story. This 30 days is not going to hinder Joe getting in this building at the exact same time and date. I can guarantee that because I can put a a multitude of contractors up who will get that work done in that timely fashion, in that timely manner. The build-out of this building is inconsequential compared to finishing all the rest of this. And we won't take 30 days for our taxpayers to make sure all these questions are answered? I think it is irresponsible not to take 30 days. We barely saw this. We had less than 72 hours to review the changes on this, and we're going to sign a seven-year lease on 72 hours' notice? None of us, not, no one on this board would do that in our personal lives. Not a single one of us would. And I want this, and I want this for Joe. But I want this right when I go back to my constituents and say, hey, I heard your voices, but this was the correct option here. Uh, that's what I wanted, have the delay for 30 days. Please.
And and Mr. Kunkel, respectfully, when you say that there's holes or questions, what questions have have been put to me that I haven't answered?
I I can't tell you verbatim now to go back, you have to roll the tape back, but there's some that you just told us just now here that you couldn't answer. And there's other questions that have not been answered from the beginning of this. Some of the questions Ms. Greenow brought up also, of the other space and other things available. I do think that if we had 30 days, if this was brought back to admin, brought back to finance, I do think we could iron out all the wrinkles. Nobody looked at that before, nothing. Even the the costs that you said, which ones are hard or soft costs? I don't care so much about that. I'm not looking for a cost-benefit analysis on that deal. I wanted an estimate to what these costs are. But there are realistic numbers. You keep talking about the accidents and the incidents, and I do hear what your people say. You know, my people in this last snow, I I have carpenters, electricians, plumbers, and they're all out driving machines like 150 operators, all hands on deck for 36 hours straight. And I was a little, I'm an old man, I got a little tired of it, and I thought I shouldn't be doing this at my age. And that morning, a trash truck got rolled up through the cul-de-sac when I'm loading snow out. And this young guy jumps out and hits every house on this cul-de-sac at minus 14 degrees and hand throws all those barrels into there, and down the road he goes. And he doesn't just do that for elections, people. He does that for a living, and he pays his taxes to McHenry County. That's who I'm responsible to. Please just do this 30 days. Let's look at this numbers and do this right. Thank you.
Mr. Kaminsky?
I can kind of warm up to Mr. Kunkel's wanting to pro- postpone this for 30 days. But I would like to know, when he, he asked a good question of answering all these questions, what would that look like? Who would be responsible? Where would that list be? Ms., uh, Greenow had a laundry list of, you know, pretty fair in my guesstimation of questions. But how would that work, delaying that so we all see what the questions are, which may prompt other questions in my mind? I said I can warm up to that, but that's kind of where, you know, you ask a good, valid question. What would that look like? How would we accomplish that?
Mr. Reiner?
Good conversation. I I don't, uh, I don't think I need 30 days to vote on this. I I would support you, Joe, on this. Um, my questions were unanswered, uh, Thursday, but after speaking to you, I really didn't know that you need this also for training and and the election and for storage. This is a multipurpose room that you need, uh, for the setup and to take down. And also, you need for months at a time to train people, uh, to do this. So I can see the need for this. Um, I don't like spending $2 million over seven years, but, um, the the rent isn't isn't that crazy expensive from my expertise in real estate. Um, also, I think we do need to end up, um, building on some more space, but this will buy us, um, a couple of years to do that because it's going to take a few years to build a building if we do decide to build a building. And, um, uh, I think that, uh, this would be more of a mistake to wait on this if you were to lose that I'll-be building and and then not be able to do another one in a timely fashion. In the meantime, we we do need to do analysis to see if we do need a building. In the meantime, your election is compromising your operation. So I think that, uh, I'd, um, I'd stay out of your lane on this one and support you on it. I don't think I would support the 30-day. I don't need to wait.
Mr. Shorten?
Uh, so a question on on the 30 days and the impact that it has on the timeline. I understand Mr. Kunkel's, um, point about the time to 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 complete construction, but also, and I don't know if this is more, uh, pointed at administration, but with with the amount of money that would be spent, uh, I think 85,000 to 120,000 is what's listed in the resolution. We have to go through a bidlet process on that, or how is it construction handled?
The owner would, uh, would be doing the build-out. We would just be contributing to any cost over $165,000. And the the build-out is estimated to take 150 days. Um, so if we get a lease signed, let's say, approval tonight, we get a lease signed and worked out by February 1st, that puts us to July 1st. 30 days then would move us into August, which, um, uh, Clerk Terrio couldn't speak to how that may or may not impact the the election. But our understanding is he has a lot of lead-up time coming into the presidential election. So July 1 is, um, kind of an important date, I think, for this to move forward effectively.
Okay. And and we kind of talked about this, I think, last week. Walk me through a timeline for the presidential election. So we don't get, let's say we delay for 30 days. We don't get in till August 1st. And get in means get the keys to the door. We have to get the machines moved in, all the equipment moved in. And then what's the timeframe to when you have to start working with that equipment to test it, certify it, all the bells and whistles?
Yes, it is, um, it's a complicated question. So some of the equipment that we that we're going to bring from here to there needs to be, um, disassembled and reassembled and, uh, and tested and and made ready. Minimally, we'd have to move all the equipment. That's that's not the biggest issue. Probably the the, besides the physical build-out, would be the the, uh, data build-out. I mean, as I'm as I'm sitting here trying to figure out how we would manage the extra 30 days, um, I could see a hybrid of doing some of the, you know, maybe we, if we got the the floor space done, we do the training. Maybe we could still do the training while the rest of it's being outfitted. It's a, it's a complicated question. I'm not saying it's impossible. I'm just saying it would, it would, it takes some, it takes some maneuvering in a way similar to that we have today. When we have an opportunity closed, we have to figure out, find another one. So I imagine it'd be a hybrid at that point.
Okay, thank you. I mean, free and fair elections, that's kind of the cornerstone of our democracy. And it, the ability to execute those on a on a year-to-year basis is important, not only, I mean, that's why we're all here. Um, and the ability for the Clerk's office, I mean, it's really the starting point. And, um, you know, I I had, uh, some hesitation on Thursday after listening to some of the comments, and, uh, Mr. Terrio took a fair amount of time to walk me through my concerns. You know, his his job is to run accurate elections. And I thoroughly believe he's committed to efficiency. Mr. Terrio's not known for, uh, overspending. I think, as a matter of fact, he is, first office is recorder. He fought to get that eliminated and rolled into his current responsibilities. And, uh, obviously, security of elections is an ongoing concern. And and the impact of any sort of failure in that process, um, we've seen it happen even at a small level. It's not good. Right now, if I understand correctly, some of our voting equipment is in shipping containers.
We have moved other equipment into those containers so that we had places to put our election equipment.
Yeah, so I I, it it's clear we have a need. Um, I don't know for myself that 30 days is going to change the way that I feel about this. Uh, I I wasn't excited about a 10-year lease. Um, I I can vote in favor of a seven-year lease. Um, so that's the extent of my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Van Hoff?
Yes, thank you. So I had two major concerns at the Cowal, and and you addressed those. One was had other spaces been investigated. And you sent a long list of spaces that were considered but would not be adequate for what the need was. So that addressed that concern. And then the other concern was the 10-year lease, which you were able to go back and negotiate and get that down to a seven-year lease. So I don't, um, nothing will happen in 30 days that will change my mind. So I do not support a delay on that.
Mr. Gottermiller?
I'm opposed to a delay. I don't see a change happening in 30 days. It's going to change my mind. I'm in favor of doing this, and I would, I, it's time to move on.
Okay, so no further comments on this motion? Ms. Greenow?
If we could even save $4 a square foot overall, it would be a quarter of a million dollars over seven years and up to a half a million dollars. Just a little quick calculation, not a big deal.
Seeing no further comments on this motion? All in favor, say aye? Against?
Aye.
Motion does not carry. Uh, we're back to the original, uh, motion as amended, uh, discussion. Ms. Wagner?
Thank you. So I I made, um, some comments last week, and even driving here, I was still kind of on the fence, mostly because I'm not really excited that I got all the information last minute. Um, since you've been working on this since 2020, I I felt like maybe we should have been a little more prepared, um, especially with with the listings. Thank you for giving us all after that. I appreciate that. Um, but in the end, I'm going to have to trust our professional staff. I think they do a good job. And thank you for changing this to 70. And thank you for changing this to seven years. That helps tremendously. And the savings, the savings that, so when it was initially presented to us, it almost seemed like it was kind of a space inconvenience. Yes, people are giving up their, their lunchroom. I didn't see that it was so, all the, all those expenses that were happening, the time the staff is putting up and taking down and, and all of that. So it is more than just an inconvenience. So I am going to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Clerk, open the voting, please.
Voting is open.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Hendricks?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 16B43. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Looking for a second. Ms. Meshes, seconds. Discussion. Mr. Kearns?
Again, I'd like to register my discourage everyone because of these amendment changes. I just, I just think it's inappropriate that we change it and, and I still don't agree with the law. I don't agree with our interpretation of the law that we think we should give unending time limits, permanent zoning changes. I just don't agree with that. I, you know, if it were 20 years or 30 years, I could live with that, but I cannot live with permanent zoning changes. That's a problem for me. And the other, the other problem I have with this is, you know, we just passed one earlier here that I opposed also in, in the routine or zoning. 10A2, we gave 150% on that one for, for the reclaiming. We gave 150%. This one changes everyone to 100%. Why the inconsistency? That's all I got to say. I'm no again. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion. Clerk, could you open the voting, please?
Voting's open.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Hendricks, how would you like to be shown?
Abstain.
Mr. Smith, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Move on to ordinances. We have one for action tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the establishment of an altered speed zone on a township road. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Ms. Meshes, seconds. Discussion. Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please?
Voting is open.
Voting is open. Have all voted who wish?
Mr. Hendricks, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, how would you like to be shown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Pete, you got a report for us tonight?
Hardly even a report, but a couple of things. I did talk with the sheriff's office this afternoon and I was informed we have 99 detainees from Lake County in, in our jail this evening. So just for, it's about two thirds of where we, we thought we might be. I talked with Mike Scala this afternoon and he reported he already knew this, but the, the CPI for next year is going to be 3.4%. So in, since the tax cap or property tax limitation law was put into effect, there's only been twice at 5% that allowable maximum was, was hit. And that was last year and the year before. But now we do see inflation coming back down. So when we have our budget debates next fall, the maximum allowable is going to be 3.4% for, not only for us, but for all local governments.
And a couple of events? Ms. Altop, you have a question?
I'm sorry, I did. 99 inmates, can we get later when it's appropriate, the average length of stay? Just because there's a financial, there's a financial issue and I would just like to track that a little bit.
You, you do make a point that I was going to mention as Kerry's sitting here and Kerry and I talked this afternoon, as did Sandra Sogato, the business manager. And, and we are going to be tracking per finances committee's request, you know, the specific dollars in, dollars out as it relates to the Lake County contract. We'll see what, what the average length of stay can, if that can fit into that equation.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry.
Okay, now I was going to mention two big things tomorrow. The, the state of Illinois Office of Broadband is going to be in this building tomorrow afternoon from 2 to 4. And we're, we're partnering them with about 30 stakeholders from the western part of the county and the northern part of the county, municipalities, schools, townships, some of their bigger businesses and we're going to be talking with them about, about broadband. So that's going to be going on from 2 to 4. And also, it's Chairman Bueller's birthday tomorrow, so.
Double nickel.
We'll, we'll end on a big one. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. No need for executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Shorten, seconds. All in favor?